Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the June 17, 2014 Business Meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We have a quorum of members present. I'd like to call the meeting to order. To begin, I would like to invite everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment's silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody have any students or guests they'd like to introduce today? No? Okay, we'll move to the approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I move to approve the agenda as proposed by the Agenda Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Is there any discussion or amendments?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to move to amend the agenda to remove Item 1 under Old Business entitled Consideration, Second Reading to Rescind Policies, IKA, ICAC, at this time, and to reschedule them for July 15, 2014, to give the Policy Committee some more time to reconsider these items.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second, motion by Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Mrs. Williams. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of Mrs. Fisher's amendment? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We return to the original motion to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of Mrs. Brightman's motion to approve the agenda? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have approval of minutes.
Mr. President, I would like to move for the approval of minutes. Were compiled from the work session on Tuesday, June 3, 2014, from a closed session held on the same date, and also minutes from the business meeting held on June 3, 2014. I'd like to move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey and seconded by Mrs. Brightman. Is there any discussion, corrections, or amendments to the minutes? If not, all those in favor of approval? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next item is public comment. We have one individual who signed up to speak, Mr. Peter Perini. Welcome, Mr. Perini.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. My name is Peter Perini, and I am a candidate for the Board of Education. I'd like to speak just for a moment today about graduation, but before I do, if I may, I'd like to give a shout out to the United States Men's National Soccer Team for their first win in the first round of World Cup, especially Omar Gonzalez and Graham Zusi. Those names may not ring a bell, but they're both University of Maryland grads, so we're pretty proud of the Maryland Soccer Team grads going on to the World Cup in Brazil. As I mentioned, I'd like to speak about graduation. I just want to spend just a second congratulating all of those who graduated from high school this year, and every student who matriculated to the next grade. Having a son, our youngest, who just graduated from North High, we're extremely proud of him, and all of his peers who have moved on, whether they're going into the workforce or into the military or off to college. We're very, very proud of all of the students and all of the work that they've done, and, you know, as much as I'd like to say, you know, there's 22-plus thousand students in the Washington County Public School System, but for every parent, there's only one or a couple. So, that day for us, there was only one, and we were so very proud of him. But, more importantly, I want to thank also all of you for making the school system and the policies and the procedures that go into place, Dr. Wilcox and his administration, and all of the teachers and the support personnel, administrators, everybody who works hard to make sure that when those students are walking across the stage and receiving their diploma, that they've actually received behind that, you know, a very excellent education and has prepared them for a lifetime of experience. So, again, just congratulations to all of those who graduated, and thank you for all that you do, and for all of the people of Washington County Public Schools that make it possible for our children to have such a great education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perini. Are there any brief comments in response?
Thank you.
Have a good day.
That brings us to the first item under Old Business, which is consideration of the Second Reading to Rescind Policy, GBEA, Comprehensive Liability Insurance: Defense of Sovereign Immunity.
The Board of Education approved the First Reading of the Recision of Policy, GBEA, at its public business meeting conducted on June 3. Since the First Reading, a notice was placed on board docs, and members of the community were offered an opportunity to provide comments. We did not receive any comments regarding this particular policy. At this time, we're requesting the Board to consider a motion to approve the rescission of policy, GBEA. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I would like to move to approve the Second Reading to Rescind Policy, GBEA, entitled Comprehensive Liability Insurance: Defense of Sovereign Immunity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher and seconded by Mrs. Brightman. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of Mrs. Fisher's motion to approve the Second Read to Rescind Policy, GBEA? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next on the agenda is the second item under New, under Old Business, which is the Second Reading to Rescind Policy, BJ, School Board Memberships.
Good afternoon. During the Board of Education's Public Business Meeting conducted on June 3, it approved the First Reading of the Recision of Policy, BJ. The motion to adopt new policy, BK, did not prevail. Since the First Reading, a public notice was placed on board docs, and members of the public were invited to provide comments. No comments have been received. The Policy Committee is requesting the Board of Education to consider the following motion, a motion to rescind existing policy, BJ.
Thank you, Dr. Marco. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move for the approval of the Second Reading to Rescind Policy, BJ, entitled School Board Memberships.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Mr. Ridenhour. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of Mrs. Fisher's motion to rescind the policy? Are there any opposed? Motion passes five to two. Thank you. That brings us to the first of several items under New Business. All these items involve approval of contracts with all of the various employee groups in Washington County Public Schools. As I was walking down the hallway to come towards the boardroom, Ms. Frye, Ms. Hines, and Ms. Lannan were all out there, and Ms. Frye commented, "It's a powerful group of women," and indeed it is. And I want you all to know how much we appreciate your partnership and how pleased we are that we can be at a point before the end of the fiscal year where we can sign contracts with all of the groups that do the hard work in Washington County Public Schools every day. We will start with the educational support personnel, so I'll ask the representatives to come forward, Mr. Bowers and Ms. Hines.
What?
I'm sorry. And Ms. Francisco, if you'd like to join them as well. So, as I said, the process of negotiation with the support personnel is complete, and we've reached an agreement. The support personnel represent about 1,300 full and part-time employees in Washington County Public Schools, and for those who aren't familiar with the term "support personnel," these include the secretaries in our schools, food service workers, custodians, mechanics, people who do so much of the work that keeps the facilities looking nice, keeps the lights on, makes sure that kids get to where they need to be on time. So, it's quite a large number of people in the public school system. Some highlights of the new agreement, it includes a step increase for all employees who are eligible for a step increase. It includes a 1% increase for those individuals who've reached the top of the salary scale. It includes an increased incentive for early notification of retirement, which I think we appreciate because that helps us be able to plan for following years and knowing how many people we have to recruit to replace the people who are moving on. It provides sick leave cash out for those retiring with 15 to 20 years of experience, and it also includes 11 other agreed-upon language modifications and adoptions in the contract. The total cost of this package is $566,718, and I will see if there is a motion for approval.
Mr. President, I move to approve the contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel, Inc., for the 2014-2015 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, seconded by Mrs. Harchman. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Bright.
I would just like to take the opportunity to thank the representatives of the ESP who are with us here today, and know that we honor all the work done by all of our employees and appreciate the care and concern you give to the children and to our facilities, and you're the partner, one of the partners that we count on making life much richer for our students, so appreciate everything you and your group does. Thank you.
Single out the special work that they did this winter with the snow removal and keeping the school open as much as we could, doing a yeoman-like work to get that accomplished. There are many highlights, but that's one of the highlights.
Thank you.
Especially the bus drivers who had to drive on some pretty tough roads, but they take great care in ensuring that our children are safe. Are there other comments? I'm going to use a story that I often use when I speak at graduation, which is a story about President Kennedy, who went to the Space Center when he was, after he challenged the country to go to the moon, and he went toward the facility, looked at, visited the flight director, and the engineers, and the astronauts, et cetera, and as he's walking out, he saw somebody who was cleaning the floor in one of the hallways, and he stopped, and he asked him, "What's your job at the Space Center?" And he said, "My job's to put an American on the moon." That's sort of how I think about all the members of our team, is whether you're a teacher or Dr. Wilcox or a board member, we're all educators, and it's our, all of our jobs is to educate our students, and whether you're one of the people who makes sure that they have a warm meal every day, or gets them to school safely, or makes sure that the school is a warm, welcoming environment, I think we all play a role in making sure that that happens, and so many of those people, in ways that we don't see all the time, are support personnel, and I just want you all to know how much we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments you'd like to offer before we vote?
No, just thank you, and we appreciate the very collaborative effort that we had during negotiations this year, so thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to the member of our team for, who kept us well-informed, and I think got us to an agreement that I think we're happy with, and I hope you are too.
Thank you.
With no further comments, the question on Mrs. Brightman's motion to approve the contract with the support personnel. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. So, if you'll stay right there, I'll come, and we'll sign the documents.
So, as Dr. Hardings come forward, I will offer a comment or two, and the comment first is, Edmer, thank you for being a true leader. Whenever there's an issue, you've brought it forward to us and tried to resolve it in the simplest, most straightforward way, and we very much appreciate having those opportunities. You know, when we talk about service in this district, one person that I point to oftentimes with my friends is actually Jimmy, who's sitting right beside you. Here's a young man who has responsibility for thousands and thousands of locks, yet I've never heard him say, "I can't keep up, I can't do this." He simply goes about his job every day, gets it done with a great deal of dignity, and quite honestly, you just don't hear of people being locked out of our schools. So, Jimmy, thank you for your hard work. Appreciate it.
You're what I'll say behind closed doors.
I know, but you have the grace not to say it in front of people, so thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Edmer.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to the second item under New Business, which is the vote on a contract reached with the Board of Education and the Washington County Teachers Association. If Ms. Frye, Mr. Becker, and Dr. Marco would come forward?
(inaudible).
It's the first time that's ever been said.
Don't let it go to your head.
Dr. Rose.
Well, the Washington County Teachers Association represents about 700, 1,750 teachers and other people who are on the teacher's scale. That includes counselors and other individuals in our school who may not be in a classroom every day but work as teachers every day in our system. Some highlights of the agreement that's been reached with the Teachers Association is it includes a step for all individuals who are eligible for a step, a 1% increase for those unit members who have reached the top of the salary scale. It includes an enhancement of the stipend that goes to our coaches and our cheerleaders. I know it's been a very long time since we've increased that stipend. It increases the sick leave cash out for teachers with 200 or more accumulated days of sick leave, and this is the one that sort of makes my eyes pop out. It included 27 agreed-upon language modifications or adoptions. The reason that makes my eyes pop out is because behind each of those changes was an issue that was important either to the Board or to the Teachers Association, and that we could reach agreement on that many different language issues, I think really speaks to the collaborative nature of the negotiations that took place. So, I'm thrilled that we were able to do that and reach, reach an agreement before the end of the fiscal year. The total cost of the package for the Teachers Association is $2,380,201. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
So, move, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Harchman. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Bright?
I'd just make a few comments. It's no secret that teachers have been the focus of education reform in the last few years, and the Common Core challenge has certainly given us all pause to reflect on education, teaching as a profession, and the societal and cultural barriers that our children bring into our schools, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank all the teachers for going the extra mile the last few years, and hopefully, working together, we can make it through to the other side of this and do the right thing for the right reason. So, appreciate all the work that the teachers do in the classrooms. Thank you.
Are there other comments? Mrs. Harchman?
I would just like to amend those groups who had been civil discussions that took place, I know, and I served on negotiations with the teachers. It was not always that way, so I hope everyone got through reasonably unscathed, and we'll be happy with that. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? I too will thank the Teachers Association and all the members that you represent. Mr. Bailey mentioned the snow that, that not only causes a problem for our support personnel, it does for teachers, because it disrupts their lesson plan, it disrupts the flow of their instruction, and I know my students, their teachers never missed a beat. They'd be back in the school the next day and pick up right where they left off. It didn't matter if they had two, three days off, or whatever it was, and that, that takes focus and commitment on behalf of the teachers who were there providing those lessons for them every day, so I particularly appreciated that, and I also, I mean, I know this has been a sort of a wild year for teachers in the classroom with the number of things being thrown at them, a couple of them perhaps from this board, most of them, I think it's fair to say, from places beyond us, but between the new synergy software, Common Core, new assessments that are coming, there's a lot on teachers' plate, and I'm hopeful, indeed I'm optimistic, new evaluations, that we've sort of reached, reached the downslope of that. I'm hopeful that all of the change next year, we're going to have a little more consistency and without quite as much change, where we can continue to focus on what I hear Dr. Wilcox talk about all the time, which is great instruction, and I'm optimistic that that's, that we're headed that way next year. So, any comments from any of you?
Neil?
I appreciate the opportunity. I think Dr. Marco's team and our team, as you said, we work collaboratively. We reached an agreement. We didn't always agree, but collaboration, we've come together, and as you said, that downward, so we've crested, I think, hopefully, on some of the issues, and we'll continue moving forward, and we've already, I think, had the groundwork laid for some things we'll talk about over the next couple of years to keep things moving in the right direction.
And the teachers are ready for a break, but ironically, today, when you got here, you found the parking lot completely full. Day one of summer break for them, they're right back at it. They recognize that the job of educating students is never complete, and their learning curve, they are lifelong learners, as much as we're trying to promote lifelong learners of their students, and they're here today, and they're here the rest of the summer doing various workshops to promote and further develop their skills to bring back to the classroom in August. So, we appreciate your support of them and bringing this arena.
Thank you. Any other, Dr. Marco, any other comments? Thank you and the team for representing us and getting us to an agreement. I think this is fantastic. And if there are no other comments, the question is on Mr. Ridenhour's motion to approve the agreement. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
And as before, as Dr. Hardings comes down, I'll simply say, you know, Mr. Becker, thank you so much for your calm, guiding voice in a lot of the processes around negotiation, but just the other day, when I was up at the Clear Spring High graduation, I saw you kind of guiding some parents in, and I said to Mr. Allshire, I said, "What kind of guy is he?" He's a great guy. He's a calm and soothing voice, he's reasonable, he brings the things to us so that we can resolve them early and quickly, and Neil, I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank you for the times that I've walked up to you and said, "How's it going?" And you've said, "It's fine, we're going to get there." That reassurance means a lot. Denise, this has been a bit of a challenging year for us in some ways, you know, with the hiring of a new Unit Service Director, learning to work together, you've been that calm, reassuring voice in that as well. So, even beyond negotiations, I want to thank you for your leadership of the association and for your friendship, which I think has transcended and allowed us to make progress moving forward. I too like Dr. Hardings, I'm looking forward to a year when we can focus on what's right with kids and what's right with our teaching force. Thank you.
We're looking forward to having a lot of second-year teachers in the classroom.
Absolutely.
Because that has been the overarching, even our veteran teachers in the classroom, have felt with the changes that have come, not because of WCPS, but because of the state and the nation as a whole, and many have commented over the course of the year that they feel like a first-year teacher again, and as all of us remember, who have been first-year teachers on several occasions, whether it was this year or the true first year, the second year is generally much better. So, we're hopeful that everybody will take that exhale and come back and say, "Okay, now I can refine what they're asking me to do." Just one comment?
Well, the document is signed, so congratulations to all.
Thank you. Happy下半年.
Next item under New Business is a vote on a contract agreement reached between the Board of Education and the Washington County Association of Supervisors and Administrators. If Ms. Gray, Ms. Lannan, and Dr. Marco?
Yes.
Unit 2's group of administrators and supervisors represents approximately 175 supervisors and administrators across Washington County Public Schools. These include principals. These include principals, curriculum specialists within this building, other administrators in this building who aren't in the classroom, assistant principals, anybody who is an administrator within our system, with the exception of very few who are at the executive level. Some highlights of the agreement reached include providing a step for all employees who are eligible and 1% for those employees who have reached the top of the administrators' and supervisor salary scale. It provides an incentive increase for early notification of retirement, similar to what I described earlier with the support personnel. Again, that provides, I think, incentive for employees to let us know when they're planning to retire so that we can be as diligent as we can in planning for replacing those individuals. It includes an increase in cash out for sick leave, and it includes five other agreed upon language changes and modifications. The total cost of the package to the public school system is $370,956. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
Mr. President, I move to approve the contract between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Association of Supervisors and Administrators for the 2014-2015 school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, seconded by Mrs. Fisher. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Brighton?
Yeah, just a huge personal thanks to administrators, both here at CES and certainly out in the schools. Principals have also been the focus of much of education reform, and so it has been a bit of a shared pain and struggle for everyone. And I think that being an administrator is a very special position of an instructional leader, as well as a morale builder. And I think that's been a very important job this year of all. So I thank everyone, again, at the school level, as well as here at Central Office.
Are there other comments? I think one of the things that Dr. Wilcox said back, even when we were interviewing him, is he said, "The principal is the most important position in a school system." And I've certainly heard him talk about that a number of times since because the principal is really the person who work, who knows the kids, who knows the curriculum, who knows all the teachers, and sees sort of how it all fits together within one school. It's a big job. And I think, all the things I said about the things being thrown at teachers, I know sometimes the principals are the ones that the teachers think are throwing it at them and probably are the ones who receive the comments, and some of the teachers, they're the ones that they express their concern to. So as we've had to implement as many things that we have had to in the last year or two, we know most of that falls on your plate. And I'd like you to know how much I appreciate it, and I think the Board does too. And I'm delighted that we've reached an agreement and look forward to another great year next year. Do you have any comments?
Not here, just thinking.
Okay. All right. If there are no other comments, the question is on Mrs. Brightman's motion to approve the contract. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. And just for the record, while I did say principals were important, I said supervisors, Special Ed were the second most important.
Thank you. contract for the superintendent of schools. Members of the community may recall that the last two years, as we've discussed the superintendent's contract, what we did was to issue a new four-year contract that would start on July 1st, so that that would give him a full four-year term moving forward. The state superintendent, who is responsible for approving contracts, based on the advice of her counsel, has decided not to approve those types of contracts anymore. Therefore, even though we've done that two years in the past, and it was certainly the Board's intention to do that this year, a change in a legal interpretation has made us, forced us to not go down that road, although I think it's clear that the Board would do that were we given the option. So in light of the fact that that was not possible, we've made some changes to the superintendent's contract, I think reflecting the Board's enthusiasm for the work that he's done here. And I will highlight a couple of those changes. The first is to increase the superintendent's base pay by 6%. That's 4%, which is what the executives within the system are getting, and then additional 2% as a performance bonus because the performance-based increase because we believe that the superintendent is doing a great job in leading our school system. A couple of other items allow the superintendent to convert sick leave to days of pay, which is really sort of a cost-neutral item because at some point, we're going to have, we would have to pay the superintendent for his sick days anyway. But this provides him the option to take the pay earlier rather than later. We've also agreed to make two changes regarding funding for his 457B plan and his 403B plan. One is increasing the amount the Board will contribute to the 457B plan by $2,000 a year and, I'm sorry, that's the 403B plan, and increasing our match of his contribution to the 457B plan by an additional $2,500 a year. So with that as background, I will ask, is there a motion to approve the superintendent's contract?
Mr. President, it is an honor and a privilege to recommend to the Board the approval of the employment contract of Dr. Clayton Wilcox, superintendent of schools in Washington County.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Ridenhour. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Brighton?
I think it's important. We're going into the fourth year with Dr. Wilcox here at the school system, and I just made a few notes earlier about why I thought and think he is such a good fit for this county. Things that I think as, and I'm not going to look at specific things here tonight, but sort of the macro parts of his work here in service. His work ethic. In living in a rural community, we all know about work ethic, and I think we really appreciate that. He arrives early and leaves late, weekends and holidays. You can find him here often as not. He tends to push team members to do the right things for the right reasons. One thing that I think is a great trait or a trait of a great leader is his willingness to admit when he's wrong or has made a mistake, and he reflects on the lessons learned from that. He listens to those with different points of view, which I think is a great attribute. And he encourages and recognizes creativity in all the employees. So that is certainly just a few, five of the reasons why I will be supporting this contract.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. President, it is the Board's responsibility annually to do an evaluation of the superintendent. And, Mr. President, if you don't mind my imposing upon you, would you mention or could you mention the, either the, some of the successes or ideas that we had in the evaluation of the superintendent?
Sure.
Just comment.
Absolutely. And in fact, for the benefit of the public, we completed the superintendent's evaluation just, oh, maybe two hours ago. It is one of our responsibilities in state law in Maryland is to annually evaluate the superintendent, and we finished that just today. It was a very good process that I think created good dialogue between the superintendent and the Board about where the system is and his performance in it and his leadership of it. Some of the things that I think really came out during the discussion were, first, his emphasis on early literacy, that really, I think, he brought to our attention as he came to the school system as really being the key for the success, for the long-term success of our students. Some of the things that we discussed with the other employee groups, just the swirl of changes that are going on in the state of Maryland, and his ability to manage those changes locally within our school system. It could be overwhelming without a leader who is steady at the helm. And I think, I think the Board believes that he has been. Of note, or a few other things, I think the Board appreciates his focus on great instruction as so many systems are getting caught up in, you know, evaluation models and what percent of this student's performance affects which teacher's evaluation. I've heard him say repeatedly, in fact, to people from MSDE repeatedly, "We're going to do all that because we're required to, but what's most important to us in Washington County is great instruction. And if we focus on great instruction, the tests and all the other things will take care of themselves." I think, I certainly appreciate that perspective, and I believe my colleagues do too. The building that we're in, really, it was through his vision and commitment that we were able to acquire the building, get in here on time and on budget. The Board commented on his many listening sessions that he has throughout the county, which provide open access forum for anybody to come and talk to the superintendent about any issue. So those are a few of the real highlights that I think we discussed as part of the evaluation process. If I left any out, please, if any other members have any, please.
Thank you for that good overview.
Are there other comments? No? I'll just close by again saying, I think that the Board believes that Dr. Wilcox is the right leader for our schools at the right time, and we continue to believe that the future under his leadership will be, bring even greater opportunities and success for our students. We're sort of sorry that we weren't able to do what we've done in the past, which is provide another year, because I think he believes, as we believe, that stability in the system is really what's going to be important as we try to move through all the changes in education. I think as a Board, we're going to perhaps look at whether, there are some remedies we can create for that, whether we can pursue a legislative change to make sure that if a local Board wants to provide his superintendent with a four-year, their superintendent with a four-year contract, that they're able to do that. But that'll be, that'll be a conversation for another day. If there's no other comments, Dr. Wilcox, would you like to say anything?
I think I would prefer to let the Board vote, and then I'll make a comment.
It's not too late to change your mind.
No, no.
Okay. If there's no further comments, all those in favor of Mr. Bailey's motion to approve the contract? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Well, thank you. I really did want to begin by saying thank you. This is really a fairly humbling time for a school superintendent because, quite honestly, you're only successful because you have a great Board who stands beside you in all of these things. I think we have a truly gifted and visionary leadership team. A lot of different perspectives are represented here, from business leaders and former teachers and administrators. I think we're able to make great decisions on behalf of the district, so clearly, I don't do this alone. The other thing, I said recently, after winning a state technology award, that really, I stood on the shoulders of giants, and that's our classroom teachers, the folks who do the work day in and day out. But you're remiss if you don't notice the folks like Jimmy, who makes sure that the schools are safe and secure. You don't, you know, think about the work that Anne Marie does until the disaster hits, but you know that nine times out of 10, the disaster doesn't hit because of a calm, caring voice in the front office who smooths out the concerns that a parent has about their child. Or the, you know, the food service staff who makes sure the kids are well-nourished and well-taken care of. So I simply want to say thank you. I want to remind each of you that I do understand that I am fortunate to stand on the shoulders of really great people. I would also tell you that I appreciate this from a perspective that it signals a commitment to the future because this is my home, Washington County. This is where we want to stay. We bought a home here several years ago. The mortgage will far outlive most of us. But I want the community to know that I am here for the long term, as long as this Board or subsequent Boards will have me. So I thank you for your vote of confidence today and promise to keep the hard work up. We'll do great things for kids together, so thank you.
I'd like to invite Dr. Wilcox to join me in signing, and I'd like to ask Mrs. Brightman to serve as the witness.
Okay. This feels like not long ago with you, Mr. Ridenhour.
Yeah, really.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Together.
Together.
Okay.
You can join me if you'd like. Good afternoon. Might as well. You might as well be up here next to me. Good afternoon, Dr. Wilcox, Dr. Hardings, and members of the Board. Nine items are on your agenda this afternoon. I'm going to do a quick overview of those items and then allow you an opportunity to ask questions. The first item is bid 2010-22, our Building Automation, Energy Management, and Temperature Control Service Contract. This contract is available for renewal for a fifth and final period. The total is $228,500. Second item on the agenda is our bid for custodial products and supplies. Four companies attended the pre-bid meeting. Eleven bids were submitted. These bids are to establish a contract for the supply and delivery of our custodial supplies to our 48 schools and office locations. These items are ordered as needed throughout the contract period. These items are ordered as needed throughout the contract period. Some of the items were awarded on a group basis, other items were awarded on an individual line basis. Within the board report, I provided you with just the summary of the awarded items of the two vendors that are recommended for award. The contract would be effective August 1st through July 31 of 2015, and would include options for renewal for three annual periods thereafter. This contract is recommended to be divided between Weiss Brothers of Hagerstown and Expideks Government Division of Camp Hill, Pennsylvania, for some of the items as well. Third item on your agenda is our bid for cleaning products, dispensers, and services for the Food and Nutrition Services Department. The Food and Nutrition Services Department has utilized this company for these services for the past three years. This is a single-vendor solution that provides cleaning and maintenance products, dispensing equipment, training, and ongoing support of a comprehensive safety sanitation program. The contract will be effective July 1st through June 30th of 2015, and staff is recommending the acceptance of the proposal by Food Safety Solutions Incorporated at a total cost of $99,873 for the annual period. Fourth item on the agenda is bid 2012-50, Document Scanning Services. These are the same prices that were bid to the school system in 2012, and this vendor is agreeing to hold his unit rate firm through this final renewal period. The cost is six cents per scanned image, and staff has utilized the contract for scanning many of their paper documents into electronic file formats. We also have on the agenda 13 requisitions to, for various Apple iPad and related items for your consideration. In the schedule with the items, I've provided you with some explanations or justifications about the relevancy of those purchases to the instructional program. Also on the agenda is an item called Cafeteria Paper Products. This recommendation is to obtain the board's authorization to make these purchases of our food service paper goods through the recent food contract that the board approved several meetings ago, RFP 2014-39. Based on the analysis that Jeff Prue conducted, the prices are roughly equivalent to the prices under this food contract, and there are some advantages in administration of the contract that provide, that is a positive change in our purchase recommendations. And item seven, bids for the demolition and the repurpose of 820 Commonwealth Avenue. The scope of service includes all labor materials, equipment, and services necessary for the selective demolition and minor building renovations to the 820 Commonwealth Avenue facility. Specifically, the project will demolish the nonessential or aging areas of the facility while separating and retaining a portion of the facility to house transportation and the planetarium. The contract would provide for utility and site connections that would be reconfigured, allowing for the reuse of that space. This bid is recommended to be awarded to the single bidder, Callis Contractors of Hagerstown, and the work would take place right away and be, required to be completed by November 30th at a cost of $733,000. There are two items under the consent agenda. Item eight is a digital curriculum for secondary education to Apex Learning at $66,625. This is a program that has been used in our schools for many years, assuming the board's familiar with it. And the last item, math courses and related services to Agile Mind Educational Holdings, Incorporated, at a price of $327,190. And I think that program has also been used on a more limited basis in the school district in the past as well. I have lots of folks here, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Is there a mo, excuse me, is there a motion?
Mr. President, the motion to approve the bid for Building Automation slash Energy Management Temperature Control Annual Service Renewal to Control System, Inc., at $228,500. Custodial products and supplies to Weiss Brothers and Expideks at a combined estimated total of $541,136.41. Cleaning products, dispensers, and services to Food Safety Solutions at $99,873. Document scanning services, renewal to Data Image Group at $180 per box of 3,000 images. Thirteen orders to Apple for iPads and portable computers at a combined total price of $250,004. Cafeteria paper products to Premier at an estimated total price of $234,328. Demolition and repurpose at 820 Commonwealth Avenue Facility to the Callis Contractors, Inc., at $733,000. A contract for digital curriculum for secondary education to Apex Learning at $66,200, $66,625. And a contract for math courses and services to Agile Mind Educational Holdings, Inc., at $327,190, moving for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey and second by Mrs. Breitman. Is there any discussion?
I just had one question. Did you say that Callis was the only bidder for the demolition?
Yes, ma'am. Correct. We did have interest in, during the pre-bid, even though it appears that there's a window for, sufficient window for accomplishing the work, it actually is a fairly condensed schedule in light of the amount of work that's to be done there. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Fisher.
Curriculum Committee a couple of weeks ago heard a presentation on the Agile Mind, and in reading through the information, I see that the Intensified Algebra I is designed for a 70 to 90-minute daily classroom instruction time period. Are we going to be able to provide that much time each day in the children's schedule?
I'm going to defer that to.
Ms. Reed.
Yeah, as soon as I get her name right. Burhams, Kara Burhams.
Doctor, doctor.
Doctor Burhams, excuse me.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So the answer to your question is, we're only piloting Intensified Algebra at South Hagerstown High School, and the middle block of their day will provide that extended time for those students. Only North and South would have the capacity and their current schedule for Intensified Algebra.
If we decide that it's a really good program, and it sounds pretty good from what I've seen so far, that, and it would be beneficial to other schools, what are we going to do about the additional time needed?
Sure. So if there are additional schools that would be interested in extending Intensified Algebra to their campuses, then we would talk to those principals and look at being flexible with their schedules.
Yes. Okay. One other thing unrelated to Agile Mind, I was pleased to see the iPad order on here. I have had a number of parents and teachers concerned about not having enough devices when it comes testing time. So to those of you out there, there's another 580, or I believe it is, computers, and it seems like about every other month, we're adding another group of computers, so I guess we'll get there eventually.
Right. A lot of our computers, orders that you see come forward from hard court, I think it is, those are replacement computers, these are actually additional iPads. I think over the last three or four years, we're up to over 6,000 iPads, maybe about 6,600 or so. Not too many years ago, we had no iPads, so we're iPad one, now we're up to iPad four. So that is an expansion of our portable devices.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
Dr. Michael, the contract for the demolition at the old site at 820 Commonwealth, we had a completion date of November, sometime in November for that. How soon will that process begin?
I think you'll see the process begin very quickly, as soon as we contact, as soon as the board votes and we determine, you know, that Callis is a successful bidder. I think you'll see work within the next couple of weeks. The asbestos project, the board already approved, we've already abated the building, and we feel like we've gained a month or so by doing that in advance of this bid, and I think you'll see it pretty quickly. If you've been by 820, the office area that I occupied, kind of the corner of the building, that shingle board was asbestos and has been removed, and pretty much can see into my old office at this point. So it's either going to demolish itself by neglect, or I think we need to help along with this process.
We can see where the wildlife is to run India from.
Exactly.
I, I was, I'm just curious, will there be any signage or anything to indicate to the public that this process will take place to maybe avoid some problems in that area?
There'll be security fencing, pretty much like to do with all demos. If you go by Bester right now, the teachers just, the last teacher just moved out on Friday, staff's over there working today and yet tomorrow, but already, security fencing's going up around Bester for that demo work. So there'll be security provided and signage, at least from a safety perspective. From the front of the building, you won't notice a lot happening. You'd have to actually kind of go up by the bus lot and to notice a lot of the demo work.
Isn't there supposed to be voting on the 24th at Bester?
There is. We discourage the election board from participating at, this, actually, the voting's going to be at the new Bester.
Oh, really?
Not the old Bester, yes. We discourage them from coming, but they still wanted to have it in Bester, so we made accommodations for that.
Oh, okay.
I hate that instruction left the table, because some of my questions are there, but you can just sort of wave or.
They'll come back.
Send me a airplane, paper airplane. But on the Agile Mind, just doing some research on that for this meeting, it lists that it is in 27 other states, but I was curious if another system here in Maryland has it, and whether they've used it for a while, and what the response might be.
Yes, ma'am. We sent emails to several districts in the, in the state to find out what has their success rate been, were they happy with the product, what pitfalls did they see that they could tell us about so that we could make implementation, implementation stronger. We heard from quite a few districts, two of them gave us very extent, plus the District of Columbia, gave us very extensive reviews of it. They were all very positive in that they thought that it really transformed the way that teachers approached the teaching of the courses that they chose to, to implement these, this program with. They did say that when teachers have the opportunity to volunteer, to, to implement it themselves, as opposed to it being a, a top-down initiative, it was more successful. And we had talked about that among ourselves already, that was already our plan, so we've done that. They've talked about how teachers can meaningfully integrate technology into the math classroom. It's not just an additive, but it is something that is fundamental in how it increases student engagement, which is, of course, one of the things that attracted me as a non-math person to, to the product, to know that students can work at their own pace, there's access for students outside of the classroom that they can have online, that, again, it, it can be a meaningful tool, instructional tool, in the teaching of math. So we've, we've gotten lots of positive feedback from other school districts that we sought, so we, we were satisfied with the feedback that we got.
Would you categorize this as sort of a flip type of instruction, where the students would be able to access some basic foundational information at home, and then coming back to class with a deeper discussion with the teacher? Or how does this relate to some of our other initiatives, like a virtual high school and so forth? How do you, is this somewhere in between all of this?
I, I think it's somewhere in between, because when, when I first saw the, the computer component, my first concern was for those students who don't have access to a computer at home. And so I did not want to get something that would not benefit all of our students, regardless of the resources that they may have at home. And so it can be used in different ways, and I think that that's one of the uniqueness of this particular product. It can be used by, you know, the very skillful teacher who wants to do something completely innovative and provide students with work to do at home and come back to class and let's talk about it and work through it. It can be used by teachers to facilitate the discussion during class, and that's the way that we really envision it being used here in Eric County. Students, whether the school has a one-to-one initiative, and of course, one of the schools that we selected has that, and that's part of the reason we selected it, it can be very effective there, or it can be designed to be used with the classroom where there is only a teacher computer and a projector. So we have lots of options here. Our teachers are in training even now, they will have continued support throughout the school year, so that they can see what works best for them and what works best for our kids, but we have lots of options.
And again, bear with me a minute, and I apologize, I don't sit on the Instruction and Curriculum Committee, and I know this went through that, but I, when I look at programs and the expense of programs and trying to justify, I guess, that is, when we, we have very professionally trained math teachers, content trained, is there, do you see this as a content program, or just a vehicle for, to aid a teacher in communicating content that we've written internally? Are you with me on this, where I'm?
Um, I, I think so. This is not to be used as a supplement to what we already have. It, it isn't just an additive. What we have said is, in response to teachers' request for instructional material that is aligned to Maryland's college and career readiness standards, this is the most innovative, the most recent, the most aligned math curriculum that we have found. Kara can certainly tell you, Dr. Burhams can certainly tell you, about the background of the developers of it and their connection with the development of Park and those standards. So it gives our math teachers aligned content that is, that is current.
So it is content?
It's.
It's both. So, you know, what we know about the Career College Readiness Standards is that there's a lot in them that is, that is new, and that hasn't been, well, not new, but that hasn't been taught in our traditional sequence, of course. but that hasn't been taught in our traditional sequence of courses. So, and the depth of the Career College Readiness Standards. So, AgileMind fully supports that. As Dr. Main stated, they've worked closely with the Dana Center, as well as the Park Prototyping Project, so they're intimately familiar with the Common Core Career College Readiness Standards. So, the, one of the wonderful things about it is, we know mathematically, yes, our teachers are, have the content down, but when it comes to looking at content and pedagogy that's needed to elicit the mathematical behaviors that we need to see from students in the classroom, AgileMind just really marries those things beautifully together and provides that professional development support as well through their team, as well as their team partnering with our team. So, when you look at the cost, you're seeing, I mean, one of the pieces of feedback from other systems was, don't shortcut professional development and the PD services through AgileMind. And so, we were very purposeful in making sure that we're providing that support for our teachers, both at Washington County level, but also in our partnership with the AgileMind staff.
And one final, you feel there's buy-in-
Oh, yes.
-from math teachers for this?
They're, they're in training now, and they're excited. And, and our math teachers that are participating, I mean, we were very clear when we met with them, we don't want you doing this if you don't want to. So, not all of our math teachers are doing this in their classrooms, and that's okay. So, the, those who are piloting are piloting because they want to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You want to follow on instruction?
I just wanted to ask a question. Are you, were you gonna move?
I have one other thing else.
Go for it.
About AgileMind.
Go ahead, and then we'll come back.
Given what I've just heard, that this is the most aligned with CCRS, and the most innovative, and that it provides a good marriage of pedagogy and content, then why are we piloting? Why are we not giving it to all our middle school students and all our high school students? Is it a matter of money that we don't have enough to make it available for? All, as I look at the data that, or the information that you've provided, a third of high school students will have this available to them in the pilot program.
Correct.
And a little more than half of our middle schoolers. So, if it's as fantastic as I'm hearing it is, and the reviews from other systems are as wonderful, I just, I heard what you said about the volunteer aspect and getting teachers to step forward and say, yes, I want to try this. But, why aren't we, as a system, saying, this is the most aligned, this is the most innovative, our kids are worth every bit of this, and now we're gonna provide this? Why are we not doing that?
Well, it's because it, the quality of a product is always impacted by the perspective of the persons who have to implement it. And, I think that giving another top-down initiative, as, again, one of the other districts reminded us, it would, I think negatively impact the success of the implementation. And so, again, because we are just starting this, and it is a very innovative approach to teaching math, this is, this will be different for a lot of our math teachers. Simply because it is so different, we wanted to start with those teachers who really were interested in trying it. And so, again, we want to take this time to make sure that we implement it well. I certainly wouldn't want to roll out anything, regardless of how good the reviews are, that we haven't thought through and, and have, haven't had the opportunity to see how our kids relate and how our teachers implement it yet. So, we, we need this time as well to see, again, just how our teachers adjust, how our students adjust. We may find that it works better for a certain type of student, we may find out that it's wonderful for all students. But, before we put so many resources, I guess, in just this one product, we really want to be thoughtful and very deliberate with how it's rolled out.
Thank you, Dr. Main.
If I could add a little bit to that, I mean, we have a very vigilant and powerful teaching staff of math teachers, of all of our teachers, but we're talking about math. So, I think we also need to be mindful that this isn't the, this isn't the only thing we have out there. We've worked really hard to align resources. Our teachers have worked so hard to develop tasks and things they're using in their classrooms. So, we did not want to devalue the work that they have done, and so, that was another reason that we wanted to make it voluntary. We don't want to devalue what you've done, so if you want to continue to use the resources that we've provided and to develop resources, absolutely. But, we also want to see, see those results. So, another component of the AgileMind program that we have for all students is agile assessment. So, all of our students in grade six, seven, eight, Algebra I, geometry, and then Algebra II, starting in January, will have access to agile assessment. So, that replaces what was formerly known as our math checkpoints, or before that known as benchmarks. We'll be using their assessment tool so that we can compare AgileMind classrooms, non-AgileMind classrooms, and because their assessments are much more Park-like than our, they have drag-and-drop. We don't have the capacity to do that with our current platforms that we have in the county.
Thank, thank you. Just one more briefly, a food services. I notice on the list of cafeteria products that we still have, I'm counting at least five instances of foam still. And, of course, foam, like, never breaks down. I was just curious if we're moving away from foam, if there's an alternative, if we've looked in, if you look at utensils, the cutlery kits, whether there are some great sources for compostable cutlery at this point. And I know there's probably a cost differential, but maybe the dump fee somehow outweighs the cost, or it's a wash, or I don't know if we've looked at that as a system.
Well, I'm not sure that I can, but I think we've, we've tried to use as many green products as possible. Our utensils are not disposable, they're reused.
Oh, they are reused.
So, they're not disposable utensils. So, we are reusing those. I don't know that we recycle them, but it's possible that they're plastic, and we do recycle them because we recollect those. We might be recycle those, I'd have to check with Chad. As far as the foam products, to my knowledge, again, we're using as many green products as possible, particularly with our custodial supplies. I know for sure we are. So, I mean, it's something we can explore for future bids.
Like the foam trays, which I think are still listed on here versus either paper or washable.
Right, but the foam, styrofoam-type products would be only in emergency situations where we don't have-
That's not a daily use.
Dishwashers not working, something like that, we would go to a foam product for that purpose.
Compostable cutlery, any interest or bias, or?
I don't, I don't know specifically of compostable cutlery on the market. I mean, you know, we've had instances where we've used, you know, hard plates and so forth in other areas, and unfortunately, they find their way to the trash can more than they do to the dishwasher. And that's, you know, becomes a cost perspective from that avenue. We do have a few schools that really have supported that green initiative, really wanted to go that way, and have been, have been very supportive. But, for a system-wide initiative to go that way, we've not had much success. Specifically, you know, to expand on what Dr. Michael said in relation to the foam, you know, we do have working dishwashers and recushens, but there are times when, you know, mechanical failures reside, and that's really where the foam comes into play. It's more or less, you know, what we call our crash kit, that you can pull right off the shelf when you have to serve. You cannot, you know, sanitize those trays effectively enough with, with pot washing. And that's what those products are predominantly used for.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, the question's on Mr. Bailey's motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to item six under new business, which is consideration of gifts in the amount of $40,000 and $5,000 to Williamsport High School. Mr. Akers? We have the junior varsity.
See if I can recall what this is. Good afternoon. Mr. Akers probably doesn't know, maybe we run out of schedule. We have a gift request from Williamsport High School, as I recall, it's for the equivalent of $40,000 for 300 pairs of sneakers from the Baltimore Ravens. Have donated, I think, financial resources to purchase up to 300 pairs of football cleats. Additionally, from RIN Engineering Incorporated, there's a $5,000 gift for fence for the softball field, and we're requesting approval of the board to accept these gifts at this time.
Pretty good. You got it.
Is there a motion to approve the gifts?
Mr. President, I move to approve a donation to Williamsport High School from the Baltimore Ravens in the amount of $40,000, and a donation from RIN Engineering, Inc. in the amount of $5,000. I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, seconded by Mrs. Fisher. Is there any discussion?
Just a question, and I'm not sure this is fair to you, Dr. Michael's, I don't know that you'll be able to answer it. How does such a donation come about from the Ravens to a particular high school?
I don't know that information. Probably some contact, you know, from the football coach or athletic department or something. Sometimes there's an interest from a particular club, somebody that's, you know, coming up through the team or something like that, but I really can't answer that question.
I think they have, they've done this in other communities also. So, I don't know what their criteria might be, but they select certain communities as part of a, an effort on the part of the National Football League in order to work with communities to provide materials and equipment for athletes.
Are there any other comments? No? If not, the question's on Mrs. Brightman's motion to approve the gifts. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you.
I just wonder where you store 300 pairs of cleats?
You're always talking about storage.
Thank you, Dr. Michael, for pinch hitting there. That brings us to personnel actions.
Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. As discussed in closed session today, there are several staff changes for your consideration today.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move for staff recommendation on personnel for the system.
Is there a second? Motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Ridenhour. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to approve the personnel actions? Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to reports to the board, board member committee reports. Mrs. Harshman, curriculum?
We will be holding the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting in August 19th at 11:15 in the board conference room. We will not have additional meeting in junior July.
Thank you, Mrs. Harshman. Mrs. Williams, finance?
Yes, the finance committee is not meeting in June, and will meet again in July. I believe the date is July 22nd, and we'll be meeting in the finance conference room at 3:30.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher, policy review and development?
Policy committee was scheduled to meet on June 24th, next Tuesday. That has been canceled. We have not met since our last board meeting. We have changed the 20, the meeting from the 24th to July 2nd. I know it will be in the morning, but I don't have a time yet.
Great. Mr. Bailey, facilities?
Nothing to report, Mr. President. Also, the facilities committee will recess for June and resume meeting in July.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour, human resources?
We have not yet since our last meeting, and this time, we do not have a meeting date set up.
And Mrs. Brightman, orientation?
Oh, sorry. I was thinking about something else. The ad hoc orientation group met this morning at 8 o'clock, and we looked at the two existing budgets on candidate orientation and new-
Policy.
Policy, what did I say?
We looked at the budgets.
The budget, okay.
Looked at the policies.
Policies. VHA and VHA, new member orientation and candidate, board candidate orientation. Have some ideas on how to revise those two policies, and trying to, again, decide on the exact deliverable, staying within the framework of the charge. We're meeting again at the July 1st meeting at either 7:30 or 8 o'clock. Thank you.
Anything for Mabe?
No, our board of directors meeting is the 1st of July, first week.
Anything for Mabe, orienta, or conference planning?
There's a conference planning committee coming up on Monday, the 23rd, in Annapolis. Mrs. Harshman and I will be attending that, and we are making progress towards planning the October conference.
Great. Any other committees that anybody'd like to report on? Okay, that brings us to miscellaneous business, future agenda items. I don't know why I slid the switch. Agenda planning did meet this morning. As you all are aware, the joint meeting with the commissioners today was canceled. We are looking for a date to reschedule that, hopefully in July. If not, it may be pushed into August. We have, a report on July 1st from the annual, from the Safe Schools Advisory Committee. This is the beginning of our effort to have our various advisory committees report to the board on some periodic type of basis. So, the first one will be the Safe Schools Advisory Committee. I think that's all I have to report, and that'll bring us to board member comments. Mrs. Harshman?
I would just like to say congratulations to all our graduates. I had the pleasure of being at the family center for their graduation, and I had the honor of speaking at Tech High and South High's graduation. So, congratulations, and come back and help us out after you have gone to college, gone into the service, or maybe started a new career. We can always use your help. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I just have a big thank you to all three employee groups. Thank you for all you've done for our students, for all you've given to our students this school year. Your dedication and your hard work pays off big dividends for our kids. Very appreciative of that. I hope you have a restful, relaxing, fun, safe summer, and see you back here next year for a great 2014, 2015 school year.
Mrs. Bright?
No comments, thank you.
Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Bailey?
I took the, today, the last opportunity that I will have to address the superintendent's contract. Having been here for 16 years, I'm moving on, and I wanted to say that that's part of my history here, that I was able to say that I recommended the superintendent's contract one time. And, I hope that Wayne or others who'll be serving here in three or four years will renew it again.
Thank you.
And then again.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Glad that we were able to finish our negotiations as expeditiously as we did this year, and I think it went well for everyone, and I'm very appreciative of the efforts of every group, and also the superintendent. Hope to see him here for quite some time. Thank you.
Just two quick things. I don't hold any grand illusions that lots and lots of people are out watching this meeting, but I do want to, once again, thank the board. But, I also want to say that the folks of this building and across the system have begun our summer hours, which means that our employees work four 10-hour days, and most of our facilities are closed on Fridays. Just want to make sure that people know that out in the community. And for those people who are coming to this building on a regular basis, and, you know, Mrs. Frye was quick to point out that teachers are coming to this building throughout the summer for professional development, and that is in fact true. But, I would encourage them to go to our cafeteria, where we've already begun our kickoff for our United Way and Community Cares Giving Celebration, and they have an opportunity- Community Cares Giving Celebration, and they have an opportunity to contribute change to our jars. And when they put change in our jars, they're in essence, in essence, voting for who's going to get soaked by water balloons out on the front lawn of this building. I would encourage everybody who wants to donate to put their change in the superintendent's jar, and I would encourage them to put paper bills in our Human Resources Executive Director's train. She is looking for the opportunity to soak herself at the hands of hundreds of employees. So please remember, paper bills in Ms. Francisco's box. And that concludes my remarks.
I think we should give Mrs. Francisco equal time.
I too want to, again, thank all the employee groups, all four really, including the superintendent. It was important to me as we started this process to see if we couldn't come to a single board meeting and approve all employee contracts. I just think that sends a great message to our community. I'm glad that we've got all the contracts taken care of before the beginning of the fiscal year. I want to thank all of my colleagues for all of their work in getting us to this point. Thank the superintendent, and thank his team who negotiated with all of these groups. Again, I just think it sends absolutely the right message to the community that we are one united Washington County Public Schools team, from the board to the superintendent to everybody else who works for the system. And as, as that custodian said to John Kennedy, "Our job is all to educate kids," and I think if we continue working together, I think we'll be, continue to be successful. There's no further business before the board, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, everyone.